Thursday, uh Tuesday, it's not Thursday, yeah. Tuesday, July fourteenth, regular school board meeting of the Dairy Copper School District. If you could all please journey and raise some for the pledge allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the very light, the wishes to announce one nation, under God, indivisible, every.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Hopefully, this will be potentially the last time we have to read this statement as a. We hope to go live on the twenty-eighth, so as a result of the state of emergency. Due to COVID nineteen declared by the governor on March thirteenth and his subsequent orders. As Chair of the Board, I have determined in accordance with the right to know law, the physical presence of a quorum of the school board during a self emergency is not reasonably practical. I therefore have authorized participation of board members at this meeting via Google Meet or via telephone. Also, all votes will be conducted via roll call. Although there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously. A method to observe and listen to this public meeting of the board was included in the meeting notice. This meeting is broadcast over local cable channel six, Facebook Live, and may be accessed by calling into the following phone number. One, five oh eight, six, five, eight, two, four, nine, zero, and entering the following PIN. One, five, one, two, zero, five, eight, eight, six, pound. If you encounter technical difficulties, please call six oh three, five, five, two, four, zero, seven, seven. Delegations and individuals will be available at the end of the meeting for those interested in calling and participating. So we can make sure all the board members can be heard by each other in the public. I will call the role of each member participating remotely. When I call your name, please identify yourself and state for the record who is with you at your remote location. Derek Anderson, Chair, I'm home alone. Erica.
Erica Cohen, home alone.
Nick.
Nick DelaTois, home alone.
Michelle.
Michelle Hittman, home alone.
Lynn.
Uh Lynn's home alone.
Jessica.
Jessica Ring, home alone.
Brenda.
Uh Brenda Willis, I am in the Hood Library with Mary Anne and Jane Boyle. And Cliff is also here and Dave Mingle somewhere. I don't know, is anybody else here?
Okay. Administrators, I see Austin.
Austin Garafalo, home alone.
Jane Samard.
Home alone.
Jane Boyle. Okay, well, I think we have everyone.
I'm home alone, Derek.
Excellent, thank you.
Derek's home alone, I hear.
Thank you.
I'm in my office, I was just on the phone with the caller.
Okay, great.
Chris, it looks like you're sitting up, congratulations.
I am, thank you, Lynn.
To the little victories in life.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, we have a quorum present, we'll proceed with our agenda, so approval of minutes from June second and June sixteenth.
Motion approved.
Brenda Willis with a motion, if I have a second, please.
Second.
I think I heard Jess there. Alright, any changes, amendments to the minutes at all? Hearing done, we'll roll call vote, Erica.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Michelle.
So I don't know how I technically have to do this, but I am a yes, but June second and abstain to the June sixteenth, because I was not.
That's fair enough. Uh Lynn.
Uh yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Brenda.
Yes.
And sure votes yes, minutes are passed. Okay, so our first agenda item is a presentation. For the roadmap to reopening schools by Dr. Connors Upporian.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I know a lot of you are joining in, so I hope that you're having a safe and healthy summer, first of all, and thank you for joining in and listening and viewing tonight. So this evening, the presentation was put together and assembled by much hard work on the part of our task force and our leadership team. So tonight, as the title indicates, it's a roadmap to reopening schools. This is an overview of our options. Tonight, you will not find a selected plan that is not the intention or the purpose of this presentation tonight. It is simply an overview, a very detailed overview, I hope that you find it very helpful. This evening, as Dr. Garafalo and I proceed through this overview. So again, first of all, good evening and welcome. And thank you for your patience throughout this fluid and flexible process of designing reopening options. Centered around maintaining strong connections with students and families. Embedded in this reopening plan. Overview are guidelines and safety measures to protect the health and safety of students, staff, and our community. Within this design are plans which we as a school district and community will be expected to shift within and from at a moment's notice. As most of you are aware, Governor Sununu spoke today at three P M about the State of New Hampshire's reentry plan for schools. Since this presentation was was complete at the time of Governor Sununu's press conference, I had no time to make any necessary changes to the content. We have a district task force meeting tomorrow morning, and it is that time that necessary modifications will begin to be made. As our schools prepare for the 2021 school year, we find ourselves planning based on many unanswered questions to create conditions for successful reopening. One aspect, however, that will remain constant within all of our schools is that of the care and concern that we as educators demonstrate for each of our students. As a district, we are committed to strengthening students' learning, growth, and connections with us and with one another. By modeling and teaching the themes of kindness, respect, acceptance, responsibility, and tolerance. We meet students' needs where they are in their various stages of development. With a particular focus on their social and emotional growth. Since students and staff have been away from our school buildings for an extended period of time. These, along with wellness and academic progress, are areas which will receive a great deal of focus and attention as we proceed. On the first slide, you will see guiding principles that is a task force we developed as a focus of our reopening plan. These principles are reflective of some of the most important and common themes that guided our thinking as plans A, B, and C were developed. And continue to be modified and enhanced as we progress along this continuum of health and safety. Balanced by learning, growth, connections, and that very, very important word, adaptability. Before we begin, I want to note that the content in this presentation and the more detailed plan that our team is currently developing is a work in progress. The content is thoughtful, it's grounded in weeks of research and collaboration, yet it remains fluid. It will continue to remain fluid. Ultimately, some of the content that you see tonight may change based on the continuing guidance that's expected to evolve from federal, state, and local agencies. And the important feedback that we continue to receive from our stakeholders. I'll now begin with the guiding principles. Develop plans for face-to-face hybrid and remote instruction. So basically, tonight, that is what we will be reporting out on. Those three plans, and we will report out those in more detail as this goes along. And I promise it won't go as slowly as it is now. Provide students with the opportunity to return to school on a full-time basis as soon as possible. Obviously driven by health and safety considerations. I know you've heard a lot about those, you've seen a lot about health and safety, both in the news, in articles, and a lot of scientific basis as well. Protect and monitor the health and safety of students and staff. Again, I stress, and we stress as our as our task force committee, the health and safety portion, and develop a high standard of care in all that we undertake. Both for students and staff and our general community at large. Enhance cleaning and sanitation protocols to meet the most recent recommendations and guidance. Our plan that we're developing will develop a lot of these guiding principles as we go on. You won't see a lot of these detailed protocols tonight. No, I'll expand on a lot of these tonight, but in our development of our plan that will be unveiled on July twenty-eighth. That is when you will see the details to a lot of these guiding principles. Maintain strong communication systems, in fact, a two-way communication system between families and our school district. We feel, and we really believe, that that is of utmost importance. I remember the governor alluding to that in the first part of what he said about school guidance today. I believe we have that strong communication system, and it will only strengthen over time, both at the district level, and I know we have it at the school, the school level. And I thank you for also maintaining that two-way communication system with us as well. Provide one-to-one technology devices to support learning and instruction, that is one of our guiding principles for all three plans as we move forward. And monitor access and support for students to meet their academic and social emotional health needs. We continuously have to monitor the support that we have and the access for students to meet their academic goals. And their social emotional health needs, whether we're in Plan A, Plan B, or ultimately, if we have to shift at any time to Plan C, which is remote instruction. So those are the guiding principles by which we have developed our plans overall. What considerations did we take and have we undertaken during the planning process? We have taken very strongly and looked at a lot of guiding documents, both in the national, state, and local mandates, recommendations, and guidance. As you know, if you did even take into a little, take into a little consideration today, if you were able to watch the governor at all. Or even a brief news clip today, or a news segment, you saw some of the local guidance, state guidance that came down today. And really, a lot of it maintained that you, that local control, as you well know, in the state of New Hampshire reigns. So we have some state guidance and document that I can certainly and will go through tonight. At a more, in a more detailed way, there wasn't much time between the three P M news conference, which ended somewhat after four, and then this meeting. So you can believe that we will, you know, detail in detail go through that tonight. And we also rely on some of the national guidance that we have, and also the local guidance that we have from from our local officials as well. I'll get into more of that collaborative effort later on. Family survey feedback, at the end of the presentation, I have the results of the feedback that you were so kind to give. And the June survey that went out to the multiple districts, the sending districts of Pinkerton to Pinkerton Academy. So I have that survey feedback for you, and thank you for doing that and taking the time, it's very much appreciated. I'm very grateful for all that you do and all of your feedback. Part of the consideration during planning also is family's ability to balance childcare needs. We take that very, very seriously. We understand, all of us understand, that the ability to balance childcare needs from from any time, but particularly from March on. Has been very, very difficult, has been a hardship. In in our considerations during the planning process, looking at plans A, B, and C. We we have discussed that at length. It's bothersome to us, and we have certainly taken that into consideration as we've moved along in our plans and tried to achieve that balance. We understand that what you're going through and what you've gone through and what you continue to to perhaps see in your future is not easy. And please know that you are in our thoughts all the time. Potential health concerns for students and staff. As I stressed in the beginning, health and safety concerns for both our students and staff. That goes without saying, health and safety is our primary concern. Students' social emotional health needs, how are we going to meet those? As we've read in numerous documents, particularly, we've certainly read that in the academy. This, the academy of pediatrics, recent literature, that students' social emotional health needs would be best met by reentering school. I think that goes without saying in much of the documentation that we've read lately. And if it isn't met in documentation and reading, it's not. I, you know, several of you have called me, I know that you've talked to board members and just being out in the community. We know that students' social emotional health needs are a primary concern, and our students need to be back in school. And considerations during planning as well, the district's ability to staff in-person classrooms and remote learning demands. That is definitely a consideration that we need to have during our planning process for either Plan A, Plan B. And if we have to eventually go to remote at any time, be it with one classroom or with more than one classroom. What is our ability to staff in-person classrooms, and if we had to even staff one classroom in a remote learning environment? We know that would, that's a reality. We don't know to what extent that is a reality. We don't have a metric on that, as I call it, we don't have data on that yet. Yet we do need to keep that at the forefront of our planning, and it is my belief, or my hope actually, it's not by belief yet, it is my hope that we will have that data soon. National, state, and local guidance, I think I've alluded to this during the other slide about, when I talked about considerations. And just to give you a little background on some of the sites that we've used and some of the guidance that we have used in our planning process, the Department of Health and Human Services. Dr. Chan referred to that today, New Hampshire Department of Education. We've used a number of documents that, or referred to a number of documents that are on the DOE site. Our State of New Hampshire Governor, Governor Sununu. Center for Disease Control has put out guiding principles as well, the American Academy of Pediatrics, World Health Organization. We have referred to some of the guidance from there as well, and reopening guidance plans from other states. So taking all of that into consideration. We have relied on much, on a plethora of national, state, and local guidance in our decision-making and moving forward. And taking parts of different guidance and using those to combine to develop our plans as we move along, and we'll continue to do so. What we've done is really known as a continuous process, the process doesn't stop. As as we talk about in our education with each student. Our education is a continuous process from pre-K all the way to adult education, and we learn every day along with you and your children. This is an interconnected model with our students at the center of all that we do, learning, growth, and connections. Those are our pillars around which we model everything that we do. So in this interconnected model, there is an ongoing monitoring and review with the school task force teams that will be required every week. Initially, so initially, we require our school task force teams to monitor and review every week. And then. The force team, and we'll likely do at that point daily check-ins with our task force teams at the school level. And with our school leadership task force team members, and then we will initially, then we will adjust that timeframe accordingly. So everything will be adjusted accordingly. But initially, at our S A U level, it's really important to note, that we will do daily check-ins. I can guarantee you that with our school-based teams. And it won't be every member of the team, it will likely be that representative of the team, whoever that is, and typically, that's one of our administrators. We also have a district-wide task force team that's that's very large and has a number of representative stakeholders. We will also monitor and review with them. And initially, we'll do that at an interval of every two weeks, and again, we will adjust the time accordingly. So our district task force team is the one I'm referring to with whom we'll meet tomorrow and begin adjusting our plan of action based on the. From the state. So again, you say, wow, there's a lot of meetings, there are a lot of meetings, but it's for a while, because we're all about our students. And how can we best serve our students? And that is why we're here in the. And and you know, if you know me. If you know our district. That is, that team's. I'll explain that, so they will meet about every other week, or as I say, some members of the community-based task force team will meet more frequently. If I need to, I will in a singular fashion. The entire team will meet every other week, or as time is needed to adjust. Our teams, these are our task force teams, and as you can see, a lot of our task force team members overlap. And I'll start with our community-based task force team, because that is the last team that I mentioned. We have a, I believe, we truly have, and I know that we do it, a great partnership with our community. And our community-based task force team includes a lot of our community partners, our local health officials, and our community leaders. So if I need to call Chuck Hemian, for instance, the Director of Emergencies Services. I'll call Chuck and not necessarily wait until that two-week time period in order to meet with our entire community task force team. I'll call Chuck and say, you know, Chuck, what is your opinion on this, or what do you think of this, because that's our local health official connection. Or I'll call Chief Jerome and say, chief, you know, what do you think about this, or Chief Gag. I'll call Dave Karen and alert him of something. So I can do that in an individual sense, or I can do that in a comprehensive sense of every two weeks. So that is what I'm talking about when I say I can, obviously, we can contact people in an individual sense or in a comprehensive sense of the team. And our teams are very, very fluid. The fluidity of our teams is great, the collaboration amongst our teams is great, for instance, our. As well as all his staff at the Boys and Girls Club. Are giving an update on how things are functioning at the Boys and Girls Club, and said, you know, gave me the four-week update, and he's on his fifth week right now. And told me things are going great with the seventy students who, you know, seventy children who he has there now. And told me then the parents that have any questions can call him, any community members have any questions that they can call him. So that's that ebb and flow of that community partnership that we have with others. I'll give you another example of the community partnership that we have with the Center of Life Management. That we'll get to the social emotional health at the at the end of the presentation, at the Center of Life Management. That Jane Boyle and I and Dr. Kristen Thibodeau met with one of their, our community partners there, Sandy Norton. And it was, it's a great community partnership, we know that we don't have to wait until a structured meeting to call and meet with Sandy, we can call anytime. To make improvements for our students, to make improvements for our families, and to be part of these task force, which is really important, the same with transportation. We bring the academy, and again, our community leaders. Other teams that we have are school-based teams. Each of our schools has a school-based task force team that will make decisions at their own level. Based on the comprehensive decisions that we make at our district level. So each of our teams really works in conjunction with one another for the betterment of our district as a whole, for the betterment of our community as a whole. And we have parents on our teams, as you can see, we have maintenance, school board members, and I don't have to read all of them to you. We have our consulting pediatrician for our district, we also have another couple of pediatricians and doctors on there, we have nurses, our school counselors. Our maintenance, food service, assistants, teachers, and district and school administration as well. Our parents have been a wealth of support and knowledge for us. And obviously, our educators, and as I've referred to our transportation provider for students. So all in all, I believe we're working together in harmony in this community to. Develop student safety and health protocols on behalf of all of our students and staff and our general community. So that basically takes up and hopefully provides you with an explanation that task force teams, they're fluid, yet they all meld into one large task force team. So I believe you're waiting for the return to school plans now, I kind of wanted to give you a background of, a background knowledge is really essential to understanding. Where we, where we started and where we've come to right now, and then where we're going. So you really needed that background knowledge, and I hope that you enjoyed a little bit of the background knowledge anyway. So this keeps you a graphic, this provides you a graphic of the return to school plans, Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C. To which I refer in the beginning of the presentation this evening. Plan A. Plan A is to completely reopen onsite. With some new safety measures in place, and I'll describe that later on in the presentation. Not too much later on, just so you know, you won't be here all evening. Plan B is a hybrid model, the hybrid model reduces our daily student population to approximately half. Dr. Garafalo will describe the hybrid model and how how do we get to approximately half of that student population, that's the important point of the hybrid model. C is. You are the open onsite model, the part that you're not familiar with in Plan A is some of the new safety measures. But going back to Plan C, you're most familiar with the remote learning model, the one we had to pivot to in March, continuing the instruction when onsite is not available. So when I referred to Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C, you can refer back to this slide if you have the presentation in front of you. And please note that the success of Plans A and Plan B. The nature of our transportation and our staff members returning to school, so the success of Plans A and Plan B, which I call. And our transportation is not yet settled after today's guidance from Governor. I'm anticipating that our transportation will be. More settled than it was prior to three o'clock. Plan A, completely reopen onsite. What does this mean? School facilities are open to all students and staff with new safety measures, and I've already alluded to that part. School-based instruction incorporates elements of online learning and face-to-face instruction, so it incorporates both. Students with their one-to-one devices will be learning how to learn online, and at the same time, will have face-to-face instruction. Access to our school buildings supports. And the social level, which I referred to in the very beginning of the presentation tonight, social needs of our students. Know are so prevalent, and I don't need to tell the parents through this meeting tonight. Know are so prevalent and I don't need to tell the parents through this meeting tonight, or the guardians who listen to that. In our smaller community, but also in our, in our nation as a whole. What about social distancing? Social distancing should be maintained. That might be a gymnasium. That burn to is, is examples of commonly shared spaces. So social distancing should be maintained in those areas. And we'll do everything um, within our realm to make sure that social distancing is maintained. Um, family members and other visitors in Plan A entering the school will be limited. And that really is to make sure that our schools are limited in terms of population, right? So we, we want to make sure that we have protocols in place that we are limiting people who come in. And then we will, in our regular plan, it's outlined and completely done by July twenty-eighth. We will have protocols for visitors entering the school. I believe you heard the governor today. And the guidance, I believe, I just don't know what page it's on yet, visitors coming to schools need to have a face covering. Call face covering, whatever face covering they will have. I believe that's mandated in the um, governor's, governor's plan or guidance today. And that's what I heard, but I haven't seen it yet. I believe at this point it is very important to note that neither Plan A nor Plan B has been decided on by our task force. And that's an important part to note. Because I, I'm sure at this point that you're anticipating, I'm anticipating a lot of questions. And one of those is, well, what plan have they chosen? We haven't chosen any. And I want to reassure you that. Um, tonight is an overview of both plans and then Plan C, which as I said before, we've experienced that together. From mid-March to June. Um, Plan A, I just want to review this, means that our students will be in school at the same time. Really, that's the least. What would the school environment look like in Plan A? Students will be organized in our school envi, in this Plan A school environment by cohorts. It's a cohort. A cohort is a group of students that remains together. So sometimes you've known that your s, your child may be mixed in with another group of students. And this, and if you read, if, if you read like we have, and I'm sure many of you have. Um, it's encouraged if students are brought in together in Plan like A, that they remain in a cohort. So they will remain with their classroom for the most part during the day, all day long. And so that's a cohort. And that's really is a mitigation strategy. Or um, reducing any, it's a mitigation strategy to reduce the contact and the spread of any, and of any coronavirus, so COVID nineteen. Efforts would, would be made again to maintain social distancing in classrooms. You call the B N S and this was. The governor's guidance also. At least six feet, minimum of three feet. Certainly, like have deaths and um, students have had cases, especially at a plan. So again, that's a range of three to six feet. And you'll see some pictures later on um, in this presentation that show how. But please keep that three to six feet in mind. Instruction. And this, this goes back to one of the mitigating strategies that Dr. Chan referred to. Um, and you have read about, you have seen, repeated over and over again, I'm sure in your homes. This is a number one task every day, hand washing, hygiene protocols. Um, social distancing. So this will be designed according to the developmental level of students. And what do I mean by that? The instruction for this, we have to instruct students how to do this within the school setting. We know that this is done at home. We know that families have done a great job with this and we appreciate that. So we expect that it'll be a lot easier for us when students return to school. However, we need to um, do an instructional-based model in schools. Because this, the environment's different than at home. There's just a lot more students. So that is what we mean by, that is what I mean by instruction. And they'll be designed according to the developmental level, the lo, levels. For instance, a kindergarten will need a lot different instruction, kindergarten first grade than fifth and fourth graders. Face coverings. You heard allude, um, some allusion to that today. So at the time of this presentation, face covering for students will be strongly recommended. We'll revisit that with our task force. And the time this presentation was developed, that was the outcome of our task force. The face coverings would be strongly recommended. You have heard it, I have heard it. It mitigates the spread of the coronavirus. It meaning face coverings, if we're in the right way, um, and if at the right level. We will expand on that on the July twenty, at the July twenty eighth presentation. Students will likely lunch in the classrooms. And I, and I go back to that cohort statement. So that's part of being in a cohort. Students will likely, and I don't want to say always, because there can be exceptions to that, if that classroom is unusable. For a certain period of the day for some reason, we would need to perhaps move that. Classroom to a different location, right? So I don't want to say that they would always eat lunch. Always is that word that you, that we try to refrain from. So they would, students will likely eat lunch in the classrooms. That is um, a preponderance of articles, a preponderance of. Research that we've done, a preponderance of plans in different states. Students are encouraged, we are encouraged to have students eat lunch in classrooms. So that is likely what would happen in the Derek Cooperative School District in under Plan A and school environment. Again, we have to make sure, we have to be very aware of allergens, just as we are in the cafeteria. We have to be very aware of allergens in the classroom. So I want to make that point here. It's not written, but I want to make that point. Unified arts, modified to adhere to cohort groupings. Again, that word cohort comes up. And cohort groupings because we want to make sure that we have, that, that we have every possible contact tracing measure available. Okay, so the more that the student, students are with each other, the easier it is to trace. Back to if, if anyone um, is showing signs of any COVID nineteen. And they're symptomatic of COVID nineteen, it is easier to trace back to that cohort. So unified arts would be modified. For instance, we encourage classes to be held outdoors, particularly like a phys ed class, okay? So that would be important. Um, would students move to unified arts in elementary school? Likely not. Unified arts would move to that. A phys ed class is a natural um, class that could be held outdoors. There's a lot of classes that could be held outdoors. We need to adapt and schedule it to be, for classes to be held outdoors. And again, that would be something that a task force at the building level would take on, not a task force at the district level. So. I, I'm trying to explain the difference between a district-wide task force and a building-level task force. What the building level would do opposed to the general task force at the um, district level. And when feasible, recess will be held outside and within cohort groupings again. And when feasible, only because we have to watch the weather. Children will have recess outside. That takes care of the school environment. Um, I think that's, it's nothing. That you probably didn't expect about a school environment, but I want to make sure, and, and all of us in the task force, I want to make sure we're pretty straightforward with the school environment. It would occur in Plan A. Again, it's designed to mitigate the risk of a COVID nineteen outbreak and, and spread, obviously. Classroom design. I'm sure you've read this too, so I feel like I'm probably repeating a lot of what you already know. Um, yet I think it's important enough to um, say it and, and repeat it to those of you who know and those of you who don't know. Um, I'm glad I'm giving you and providing you with the information. Desks facing the same direction. Again, that's a mitigation strategy and one that we've read about and, and is grounded in the research that we've done. Students will be appropriately spaced out when seated at tables. So. A lot of our classrooms, as you know, those of you who've particularly been in schools, and I think most of you have, perhaps except for our parents who are entering. And if you're welcome in this and when you haven't been in schools for the first time, I, I welcome you. And it's really not so rigid, so um, unfortunately we have to watch our presentation. It's a, it seems a little bit rigid for. A plan, but I think you understand. Um, so we have tables. So we have to appropriately space students at tables. And our tables are different. So I can't say, oh, they'll be seated on one side of the table. If it's not a table, it's conducive to that type of seating. So if it's a table that's conducive to that type of seating where you can sit students at one side of the table, that's the guideline we have to follow. But often tables aren't conducive to just sitting at one side of the table. Minimal additional furniture. Um, classroom designs will have minimal additional furniture in many of the classrooms. Because of the um, amount of desks that we can fit in under that three to six foot social distancing guideline. Therefore, we need to minimize student-to-student sharing of materials. And um, we really thought about this when we sent the letters out. The principal sent the letters out to you as parents about materials. We did ask for a lot more this year. And um, we did that with a purpose in mind, because we knew that student sharing to sharing materials would not be good for students, particularly this year. So efforts will be made to minimize that. We can't promise that students won't share materials. Um, but we will ma, make every effort to minimize their sharing of materials. And that's, as I said, why we asked for a lot more this year. So this is, this picture that you see here is an example of one classroom with thirty-four desks. That's four feet, that are four feet apart. So please don't get scared, first of all. We're not going to have thirty-four students in a classroom. I want to say that in front, but that is the, yet that is the amount of desks that was fit, that were fit into this classroom. Um, as an example here, in relationship to this, some, some rooms will be able to fit. Um, at a capacity of five feet desk spacing. Our classrooms differ in square footage. This configuration is um, I think eight hundred and thirty-four square feet. This room is about eight hundred and thirty-four square feet. Our, we can't do, in, in the Derek Cooperative School District, right, we can't say. Every classroom will have so many feet between each desk because of the room configurations and the different square footage. Involved in each classroom and in each um, building. So that is why it's difficult. We can't say, you know, Corrigan will be this way and Barker will be this way and Derek will be this way. Because they each have different square footage, a, a lot of them have different square footage, and some of them have different designs. The bathroom will be over here and one classroom and the bathroom will be over here and the other. And uh, a wall may be over here, or as you see in this picture, um, the bookcase may be. Or a bookcase or a shelf maybe here, and it may be um, immovable. So we have to be careful and not overgeneralizing is what I call. And I think that's just an important note. The range of three to six feet is much more applicable in the general sense.
Okay. Hello, everyone. We are going to move to slide eleven, Plan B Hybrid, Limited Capacity. First of all, if we start in Plan A, for instance, and COVID nineteen spikes, it should be understood that we may move directly to Plan C. So that doesn't necessarily mean because it's A, B, C, that we're going to go back and forth between. But the task force members believe access to teachers in the school buildings is in the best interest of our students. Therefore, Plan B or um, hybrid involves a combination of face-to-face instruction and remote learning. With the ability to maintain six feet of social distancing at all times. Uh, that is including in the classroom. And the six-foot minimum allows for only approximately half of the students in the classroom at one time. The task force focused on having as many students accessing face-to-face instruction as possible each day. While maintaining a safe and healthy environment. Several options were considered, including attending half-days, alternating days and alternating weeks. School facilities will be open to all staff and on a rotating basis to all students. Again, visitors will be limited and required to call ahead. And school-based instruction will incorporate elements of online learning and face-to-face instruction. In this plan, the possibility of having all students in kindergarten through second grade. Attend every day for the duration of the school day is currently being discussed. Plan B Hybrid Options. The task force members have examined all three options and are leaning towards options one and three at this time. It was just determined that at least one week a, away from the teachers and the school buildings was not optimal for. Students in the alternating uh, weeks plan. Developmentally, options one and three are more appropriate for our K through eight students. And the connections with students and families will be more consistent with those two options. Uh, cohort groups are being determined by geographic location to allow children from the same household to maintain. Identical schedules whenever possible. The task force understands that childcare and work schedules will be a challenge for any option presented for Plan B. But believes the hybrid model is preferable to completely remote. In upcoming uh, slides, I will discuss options one and three in greater detail. Plan B Hybrid School Environment. Uh, we will be having smaller cohorts, as I said, approximately half of the students in each classroom. At one given time or time of the day or on one particular day. And uh, that will be determined based on school facilities, um, which will be open to all students on a rotating basis. To reduce or mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen. As stated before, visitors would be limited and required to call ahead in order to reduce the density within each school. The full-day app, option are those referring to the alternating weeks that I mentioned and the uh, alternating days. Um, although we uh, have taken the alternating weeks off the table. Plan B Hybrid Classroom Design. The spacing of desks in the classroom seen in these two pictures. Uh, are that, there they are. Um, represent the same classroom of eight hundred and seventy-four square feet. The picture on the left shows a classroom with desks spaced six feet apart for a total of sixteen desks. And the picture on the right shows the desks spaced five feet apart, yielding twenty-three desks. These two pictures illustrate the difference in the amount of desks that are able to be placed into the same-sized room according to. Social distancing criteria. And I think you will also notice that the rooms are pretty stripped bare. Of uh, a lot of the extras that uh, many teachers and students uh, love to have in their rooms. But the idea is to allow for the most amount of space for the amount of kids we need to have in the room at that time. All right. Plan B Hybrid Option One Full Day. So here is an example of the full-day option one of alternating days. According to this chart, Cohort A is pink and Cohort B is green. So therefore Cohort A will be physically in the buildings, face-to-face every Tuesday and Thursday. and remote from home every Wednesday and Friday. We looked at a model that just followed every other day. But the general feedback we got from members of the task force, especially parents, is the need to have some structure. So in this particular instance, it would be understood that if your child was in Cohort A, they would always be in school on Tuesday and Thursday, and then they would be remote on Wednesday and Friday. So therefore Cohort B, just the opposite, will be physically in the buildings, face-to-face, every Wednesday and Friday, and remote from home every Tuesday and Thursday. Mondays, which by far have the most days off due to holidays and such, would be designated as the Florida Day. When school is in session on a Monday, Cohort A and Cohort B will alternate those Mondays, being physically in the building and face-to-face. And then on the opposite Monday, when the other cohort is in, remote from home. Okay, Plan B Hybrid Option Three, Half-Day. This is an example of the half-day option three, mornings or AM and afternoons or PM. So again, Cohort A is pink and Cohort B is green. Cohort A will be physically in the buildings, face-to-face, every morning and remote from home every afternoon. Therefore Cohort B would be physically in the buildings, face-to-face, every afternoon and remote from home every morning. A positive of this option is that students will, all students will be physically in the buildings, face-to-face, for at least half the day every day. There is a prohibitive transportation cost for this option because of the need to pretty much double the bus runs every day because there would be a back and forth in the morning and a back and forth in the afternoon. Plan C, a version of which, excuse me, we had this past spring due to COVID-19, starting in March, is a completely remote learning with students never physically in the buildings, face-to-face. And we are all hoping that although I must thank our staff and our parents and our students for the job they did this past spring, we hope that we will not have to go to a fully remote model. On this particular slide, for those of you checking it out later, there is a link to the Dairy Cooperative School District's Remote Learning Plan from the spring. Although we are in the process of revising this plan from the feedback we received from staff, students, parents, guardians, and community members. We are also looking at whether a minimal number of students with special circumstances could still receive some in-school, face-to-face instruction even in this fully remote model. Okay, Curriculum Instruction. Learning. Once again, Plan A is completely reopened onsite with all students physically in the buildings, face-to-face, every day. Even so, we will maintain many of the elements of remote online learning within the classroom. Some people have used the term blended learning in the past. We are trying to do away with the term of blended learning. We want our instruction to be, even in the face-to-face environment, online as well as person-to-person, right in that face-to-face environment. It's beneficial for students and staff and will help with the transition if we do have to move from Plan A to Plan C, or Plan B to C, or back and forth, or whatever. So Plan B, the hybrid model, will continue with students physically in the buildings, face-to-face, while alternating days or times of the day. Students will be learning remotely from home. And again, like this past spring, Plan C will be one hundred percent remote learning from home with taped and live sessions. Technology. Dr. Dancy, our Information Technology Director, has worked closely with Jane Samad, a business administrator, and our superintendent, Mary Ann Connas-Crickorian, to provide all of our students with computer access and expanded internet access capabilities. Every student will now have an Edmentum license. It's thanks to these individuals, along with Cara Gray, our Federal Projects Director. Edmentum takes the NWEA testing that we do and creates learning paths for our students. And we are currently using that for our summer learning plan that was just established for this summer. Other software and program includes, but is not limited to, and Dr. Dancy would know better than I, but Newsela, Google Classroom, Mystery Science, Zoom, and Screencastify. Professional development and learning opportunities begun at the end of this past school year will continue at the beginning of this coming school year and will be developed and continued throughout the 2020, 2021 school year. Matt talked a bit about the social, emotional, mental health that is so important to our students and our staff. And as a district team, we've worked collaboratively with Dr. Kristin Thibodeau. She is our district chief psychologist to address one of the most important aspects, this social emotional health. Our superintendent, as well as Jane Boyle, the Director of Student Services, and our counseling team leaders, Megan Muratour and Jen Ayotte, as well as some of our other counselors, have been working with Kristin to plan for our students' return to school. Mary Ann mentioned the great partnership with Director Sandy Norton and the Center for Life Management. And they're working, she's working collaboratively with Dr. Thibodeau. And Dr. Thibodeau herself, along with her counselors, will be making a brief video explaining some supports that will be available for families, and that should be coming out in the upcoming weeks. We'll be soliciting information from families with ten questions related to anxiety and depression so that counselors will be able to identify students needing additional social emotional support. Please realize that confidentiality in these is of the utmost importance. We'd be looking for student names on this because we want to be able to identify those in need. And our teachers will be receiving not only a reference sheet for social emotional support, but training on the early warning signs so we can make sure that our kids are adjusting in the right way. From the beginning, our remote learning plan, of this remote learning plan, Mary Ann has emphasized communication and making sure that we do not allow any of our students to be lost during the remote learning process. And as you can see, this will continue with our emphasis on social emotional health. Thank you, and back to Superintendent Dr. Connas-Crickorian.
Thank you, Austin. Nice job.
Well done.
Well done. All right. Sure you don't want to continue?
I'm good.
As I alluded to in the beginning of the presentation, you took a survey, many of you took a survey from the sending districts to Pinkham Academy called Fall Planning Survey Data. It was back in June. Sometimes it seems like a long time ago. And one of the questions was, will you be sending your child or children to school in the fall? Thank you for your comments, and I do realize that you answered that without knowing the plan, right? And so the overall response to that, Gary had a total of two thousand one hundred ninety-seven responses, pre-K through twelve. As you can see from this data, I won't spend too long on this slide. But eighty-six of the responding pre-K through eight families indicated yes to that question. As we know, that data could change week to week. Your responses could change week to week, and they very well may based on what's happening within our local community and the metrics within our local community, within our state, and within the nation. So, and then you can see below on the Dairy Cooperative School District data is that of the Pinkham Academy data. It's okay. I'll go to the transportation question next. So I know right now this seems like old data. But I thought it was important since many of you took the time to fill out the survey. I thought it was, it was important to take time to review the survey data. The second question was, will you be using district-provided school bus transportation to and from school? That question was then further broken down into morning and afternoon categories. So with the same sample group, approximately half of the elementary families will consider using school district-provided bus transportation in the morning and afternoon. You can see fifty-one percent in the morning, forty-nine percent in the afternoon. That switched a little in middle school, increased a little bit to fifty-three percent, and sixty-one percent in the afternoon. And then high school was a drop-off, as you see, AM and PM. Sidneep can drop off in the afternoon, and more in the afternoon. So the highest was middle school in the morning with fifty-three, and the afternoon was highest, and middle school was sixty-one. Again, those numbers could change if we ask that again today or soon, and I wouldn't be surprised if they did. In the, in the form of transportation, I would certainly, you know, encourage parents. It's a definite unknown for us, right? Regardless of what plan is chosen, either A or B at this time. So I would encourage parents, if you can, to think about driving your child to school or carpooling. If at all possible. We don't want to put undue stress on the family. So whatever, you know, plan is, plan is chosen, one of those two options would be a good option. Not that we won't be providing district transportation, but because it's, because that's a big unknown at this time, it will become more clairvoyant as time moves on. However, that's, you know, one of the possibilities that you could do, and maybe even carpool, depending on, you know, the amount of students in the car, the amounts of kids in the car, obviously, and who is driving with you. So I think that has to be taken into consideration too. And I have already spoken to our police department about that too, in terms of traffic and so forth. And that's the value of us being, having a task force and being able to give each other a heads up as to what's coming down the pike and what we anticipate, that anticipatory set, as I call it, and then anticipatory set with increased traffic, regardless of perhaps what plan is chosen in the end. So what are the next steps? What are the next steps for us? And what are we awaiting? I probably already said it a number of times. We are waiting transportation decisions. What transportation decisions are we waiting for? The number of students per bus. If you read some of the literature again, you, we have anywhere from one student every other seat to one student per seat to, most recently, two students per seat, perhaps, with a face covering. That's what I've heard from the latest. We have not decided on one because we don't have any guidance right now. As I said today, perhaps that will pivot or change with the new guidance from the governor. Again, we have also heard, gone back to that one student per seat and increase that one student per seat with, with family members in that particular seat. And what other decisions we are waiting in, in terms of transportation realm? The associated costs for hybrid model option three, which is the one Austin referred to and spoke so eloquently about, the half-day AM, half-day PM. What are the actual associated costs for that hybrid model? So those are the transportation decisions we are awaiting. We expect to have those very soon. And we will have them, we should have them in order to, in order for our plan to be unveiled on the twenty-eighth. And we need those decisions for, in order to choose a plan, we need those decisions. So I'm positive and optimistic. I'm a rather optimistic person. So I'm more optimistic than I should be. However, I'm optimistic we will have the decision set. We are also awaiting, actually, we already got it. Sorry, expected July fourteenth at three PM, and yes, we already received it, so that's why I update the slides. So we already did get that guidance. Just have to go in and thoroughly read it tonight. So that is the task at hand for me tonight. Roadmap to reopening schools, overview of options, question form. So after this evening, I know you have a lot of questions. You probably already did. So we, in anticipation of that, as a task force, actually, it was our internal task force, maybe we have so many. It's an internal task force committee, have already made up a question form for you. And from July fifteenth to July twentieth, we'll have that posted on our school district website. That question form relates to the presentation this evening, so you can go back and refer to it. Or you may have the questions now. And the questions, we have them related to categories specifically. We have them related to extracurricular activities, food service, instruction, health services. So you may have a question about health protocols because those will be delineated in our final plan on July twenty-eighth, but you may have questions about that now. So you may want to ask a question or submit a question about health protocols. Sanitization, what's our sanitization protocol going to look like? We will have that from July twenty-eighth. What, what's scheduling going to look like? In, you know, Plan A. Social emotional health, can you tell us more about social emotional health as a family? What's technology? You know, we, now, we know every student's going to be provided with a one-to-one device. I think that's like a celebration in itself. I'm so excited about that. I am like so excited. Can't tell you how excited I am. Yet, so what is that going to look like? You know, how much professional development is needed, but also how much education is needed for our students in order to learn how to appropriately use devices? And I know a lot of them know how to learn, but that blend of the face-to-face instruction, the online learning within, within the classroom. Transportation, I think I've given you enough information about what we don't have. We'll have that information. And then the question, your question may be about another topic. What we're asking you to do is, is be a little patient with us when you submit these questions because these questions will then form the framework for our presentation on the twenty-eighth, on the twenty-eighth of July. So what we'll do is not only present our plan, but we'll also present a frame, we'll also present our, have our presentation in the form of, gee, we had a lot of questions about sanitization that may not be quite explained enough in our plan. So we'll go back and we'll address your questions about sanitation, not every single one. We'll address those in the framework of our plan. So we'll find that theme and we'll address those questions. Instruction. We'll look at your questions and say, you know what, our plan is not really, does not really address all of the questions you had about instruction. So that's what we need to do. So these questions will really guide us in doing a better job on July twenty-eighth. And I think that's really important to you as the audience, and it's really important to us to do a really, really good job on July twenty-eighth. And to listen to your, to your questions, which really provides, provide us feedback. So I think this is really important. It's found in our, it will be found on our district website beginning tomorrow. Cliff, I think I have another slide. Cliff? Dr. Dancy? You going back? Okay. I know I have another slide. Unless I talk too much and then you cut me off. I do have another next step, but.
I was, I was going to throw up the golden air, but I got too late.
Okay, that's okay. We will continue work with our task force teams. I certainly explained that throughout the presentation. And we will finalize and communicate our plan for opening schools on July twenty-eighth. And Human Resources, Kathy Kenney, our director, will continue to, Director of Human Resources, will continue to work with staff regarding their needs. And then after our July twenty-eighth presentation, we'll send a return-to-school form home to families. We'll send it, obviously, Dr. Dancy, we'll get that out to families. And that will be an intention to return to school under the selected plan. So you'll receive a form as, as a family asking you, what is your intention, intention to return to school? And, and what is your intention to, to use district transportation? So that'll go out after our July twenty-eighth presentation. So I really, what we really want to do as a task force here is to delineate the next steps so that you would know what's coming ahead and, and the kind of the terrain in which to expect. So that you would know what's coming ahead and, and the kind of the terrain in which to expect. I hope that tonight, uh, that all of us together, because it certainly was a very, very big team effort. Have provided you with some sort of overview and, and a concrete overview, a comprehensive overview of Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C. And more than that, um, filled in some gaps and some questions. And um, hopefully ease some of your anxiety. I know there's a lot of anxiety out there. Um, we are here to, to um, provide you with, with as much safety and as many safety nets as possible. We ask you to believe in us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann, a great presentation by yourself and Austin, um, Dr. Dancy for assisting in that. Mary, as you said, stated, the twenty-eighth is the night uh, you intend to unveil your plan. And I believe um, the intention is we're going to collect questions um, the prior weeks leading up to that. We won't have a lot of answers this evening. Um, so we always have delegations and individuals and people welcome to um, call in or, or however they want to um, this evening. But again, it's best if you can put that information through the website forum as it will get to the appropriate channels. And we can tally those questions up and create those answers during that presentation. Does any board members have any questions or feedback at this point? Okay, um, Mary, could you um, explain on, on the, on the twenty-eighth? Are you going to just have a normal presentation or are we going to have um, any of the stakeholders with us that evening?
Um, this is the framework of, well, it's a framework of the framework, put it this way. So please don't hold me to this, this is a initial thought, okay? So we haven't met tomorrow, so this is precluding tomorrow's meeting, we kind of preview tomorrow's meeting. So my thought is this, and we discussed it a little bit as, as an internal meeting, is to have the presentation, obviously, you know, with the, with the final plan. And the final plan is, is much more delineated in terms of sanitization protocols and health protocols and response plan. And what the response plan would include, what if someone is exhibiting signs of COVID nineteen? What, what are the next steps? So that would be um, detailed in the plan. You know, what, what happens? So that's part of the health response plan. And Susan Lindhane, our head, our head, uh, lead team leader nurse is unbelievable, she's great. So she is taking care of a lot of those details um, with us and that, that, so that'll be involved and um, embodied in the plan. So those are the kind of things that you'll see in, in the plan, um, just so you know ahead of time and the public knows ahead of time. Transportation. Um, so a lot of those details, more, you know, more detailed instruction. So that'll be aligned to the plan um, that is, that is eventually selected. Um, and then the secondary part of that, and, and it's really just developing, and I haven't asked some of the stakeholders yet, so they may not know they're being asked. Um, is to have some of the stakeholders here. Um, perhaps our team leader nurse, perhaps our consulting um, physician. And obviously I, I have asked some of our um, administrators already. And then an elementary principal, an elementary admin, uh, middle school administrator to be, to be here wherever we're at the board meeting. And then, you know, we, we will have um, be able to answer many more questions that come in. So we'll be able to assemble those questions that come in from the general public, from that question form. And kind of hold like a, a town hall is what I call it. You know, so we may do something that is um, virtual, a, a one-way virtual communication. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking along that line. But we'll have some stakeholders here in terms of, you know, part of our, many of our participants. That is my um, hope right now, we can do that and have some, a, a live board.
Right.
There's just stages, so I'm, again, talking in very brief details because it hasn't been planned out yet. We had to plan for this first.
Understood. Okay, any, 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 I guess, but any board member feedback at this point? All right, well, thank you very much uh, once again for the presentation. And um, look forward to the night of the twenty-eighth. And uh, moving forward um, from there. And uh, next on the agenda, we have the Data Governance Plan.
With calm, Dr. Dancy is on his way.
Ah, good evening. According to RSA one eighty-nine sixty-six that was passed a couple of years ago. The Data Governance Plan must be voted on by the school board every year. Um, the one that I have provided for you doesn't include any changes with the exception of a, a link to our new um, Student Data Privacy Consortium list of approved websites and web resources. So what you have in front of you is exactly the same pretty much as was last year. And we just need board approval each year for this document.
So I move to approve the Data Governance Manual. Um, as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Michelle to accept the Data Governance Plan in a second.
Yeah, I'll second that, Derek.
Uh, Lynn is the second.
Uh, just add that this should take us through the end of uh, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay, um, Brenda?
I think she departed.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
She's here.
I'll come back. Erica?
Yes.
Nick? Say something? Michelle?
I mean, yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Do we have Brenda?
She's in the room with Mary Ann, she might be able to use hers.
She prompted, it prompted she had left the meeting a few minutes ago, so.
Right, we had to restart her machine.
Okay.
Can you hear her now?
I can make her.
You can just come up and use mine. You can come up and use mine.
It's a very important vote, we must get everyone's approval.
And I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, do we have Nick? See him on here.
It says he's on here.
Yeah, uh, he might be muted or something. Uh, well, chair votes yes, so we're, we're almost there.
Yeah, sound good.
Excellent, all right, motion is approved. Thank you very much, Dr. Dancy, for getting us to this couple of years, so. Um, next on the agenda, we have a slew of policies. I think, Mary Ann, there's only one second reading, is that correct?
Yes, there's only one second reading, um, that's pandemic epidemic emergencies.
Okay, so um, can we take that one first and then we can just roll through the rest of them?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yes, um, we have pandemic epidemic emergencies, EPS code E B C F. So the pandemic epidemic emergencies policy as stated last time. Um, apparently one existed in the district years ago. It was not to be found, so um, another one had to be created. Another one had to be created, um. So I'm not sure if there are any questions on this, we did ha, I did have some um, modifications brought to the board under continuance of education. And I did want you to know that when the superintendent designates one or more employees to serve as liaison, that's in the, that's in the, under planning and coordination on the first page, that has been done. So that's myself, um, Susan Lindhane, which is our school nurse team leader, and Jane Smart. So far, those are the designees right now who are working as the planning and coordination. Um, under the continuance of education on page two. We've clearly spelled out the plan of alternate means of educating students in the event of prolonged school closings and/or extended absences. And this is better that we had our Plan A, B, and C prior to this opposed to before. It was, it was prior to the, you know, or after this, I should say, because the continuance of education is spelled out in the remote, in the remote learning plan. Um, if you go to the second paragraph, such a plan may include, it is not limited to extending the school day, having school days held on Saturdays. Use the previously scheduled vacation days and/or extend the school year beyond the previously established end of school year. Such changes to working conditions may subject to impact bargaining with the unions. I believe there was a point of discretion there uh, last time, and that is obviously subject to the collective bargaining union. Has been checked out with our attorney again, and um, that is subject to collective bargain. So we are set on that. Um, and the last part, modifications to school board, of school board policies. Specifically pandemic epidemic emergencies, the superintendent's authorized, authorized to modify or adapt school board policies as needed. And shall update the school board about any changes at its next meeting. Um, there may be a wealth of policies that need to be amended or adapted or modified. Um, even this year, and my job is to update you at the subsequent school board meeting. Um, there is a, there was a legal reference here that has since, should since be um, struck. Apparently, when our council looked at this and actually developed this policy. There was a legal reference on the DHHS website, Hampshire Health and Human Services website, and it is no longer there. So that's the only thing that needs to be struck from this.
Okay, um, so our second reading, so uh, can we make a motion to accept the policy? Uh, requisite changes to that legal reference?
We're too critical.
Motion by Brenda?
I'll second.
Was that Eric? I'm sorry.
Michelle.
Michelle, thank you. Any discussion on the policy? Okay, um, Jessica?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Lynn?
Hit the wrong button, I'm here, yes.
I'm sorry. Chair votes yes, the policy is approved.
Bet you're really worried you lost me, huh?
It was. Okay, Mary Ann, let's um, go through the rest of the first readings then.
Okay, the first reading, thank you, by the way. Um, first reading of suicide prevention and response, EPS code J L D B B. Per law, per requirement, we need to have a suicide prevention and response policy. So it is fairly clearly spelled out, the policy is um, very, very clear, that we need to have in the um, second section, a district suicide prevention plan. That um, I should develop and provide to the board for approval. A coordinated written district suicide prevention plan called the PLAN, with guidelines, protocols, and procedures for prevention, risk assessment, intervention, and response to youth suicide and suicide attempts. Um, in speaking with our council, that is a highly, um, most of those are highly technical documents. Right now, we do have a student safety protocol that is currently in with council to make sure that um, we are not missing any steps. Its last approval was in two thousand seventeen, that's been existing for a long, for, for quite a while in our district, probably four years. So between um, Chris Callen, myself, and Austin, as well as our s, director of schools, uh, school psychologist, Dr. Kristen Thibodeau. We will need to get this suicide prevention plan done in a comprehensive sense of the word. Um, requirements of the plan as listed. In one through nine, nine goes on page two, is a requirement for a by any, by any review of the plan. And annual training, that is one of the um, caveats that we have, that I have been speaking to in terms of all staff. Need to be trained prior to April first, two thousand twenty-one. I have spoken to um, our union president, Meg Morseberry, she's complete agreement with this, in fact, Meg has tried to help us get training. Um, I have spoken a number of times with Candace Porter from Connor's Climb, Candace is very willing to do our training in an online setting. Um, takes about two hours because, from start to finish. So Candace has been more than gracious in offering that training to the district. Um, I appreciate Meg's flexibility and willingness to um, help us out with this as well. So our staff has to um, have this, every member of our staff contracted services. Um, dri, bus drivers, everyone has to engage in the annual training, so that will be done. Um, we also use resources from the Bureau of Student Wellness, which is part of the Department of Education. And the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. That, the American uh, su, Foundation for Suicide Prevention is very clinical in nature, but very, very helpful in terms of resources. In fact, they have a whole packet in my office that is from um, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. There are more resources now than there were, and I expect there will be more in the future as well. So that is an annual training that is mandated um, by any review of the plan as stated and um, it defines in the, in this policy, defines a suicide prevention coordinator and liaison, being the assistant superintendent. As the district suicide prevention coordinator, who shall be responsible for A through E. So that's not the superintendent, that's the assistant superintendent. So we will uh, designate Chris Callen for that and um, school councils, building principals or assistant principals are designated as the building suicide prevention liaison. And everything is very well spelled out in this policy. It's, it's a simple read in a very complex subject, a serious subject in a complex world. So although it's a simple read, it's in a very complex and, and uh, serious content and uh, serious subject. One that we take extremely seriously in this district, and our job is not light in this, yet it, we work together, and together as one. Sorry, questions?
Sounds good, Mary Ann, can you move on to the next one?
Okay, um, the next four. The state updated ED three oh six dot one for basic instructional standards. Uh, the first of which dealt with homework, which you folks um, uh, approved the revised uh, homework policy back in uh, last month, June of two thousand twenty. Uh, they were also looking for an organized plan for recording student progress. That's our policy IKAB. If you um, look at this new policy. Um, we just added that phrase to have an organized plan for regu, rego, recording student progress. Um, at the bottom of the second paragraph, since the middle school is online through Power School uh, and not paper, we added online and/or uh, and not paper, we added online and or as paper forms. And in the third paragraph um, to uh, regarding notice to parents, we added or relying on parents to access the online progress progress report without teacher prior notification. Other than that, um, it is intact. Any questions on IKAB? Um, next uh, is uh, a policy for promoting students from one learning level to another. And that is uh, policy IKA. And we just added that phrase to the um, last um, uh, sentence. Let me see how it's. Yep. The grading system will be utilized for promoting students from one um, learning level to another. And that is the um, revised changes for policy IKA. Any questions on that? Um, next was instructional, uh, wait a minute. Next was earning of credit. Our policy IK, a policy outlining how students will demonstrate achievement. And um, I believe we just called this one reviewed. The only thing that was changed was in the second sentence mastery is defined as there was a colon, the colon was removed. That was the swooping changes to this policy IK. I'm not even going to ask if there's questions about that one. And um, the next policy IHCA summer activities. We added the word school before the word board, and we added the word board in parentheses because it's referenced further on in the document. We added the dairy cooperative school district and in parentheses district because it is also referenced uh, later on in the document. And added recognizes that student student learning is an ongoing process. And at the bottom of that paragraph, engaged in extended learning opportunities. And that is the revisions to summer activities. And that, and those all go along with ED three oh six dot one four. The final um, first reading is for attendance, tidiness, and truancy, which is policy JH. And um, the the idea behind um, revising this at this point was trying to add some wording around the fact that we are not always face to face anymore. Um, so in the first sentence, uh, the word participating was added. Um, participating in school and learning. And then in the second sentence, um, whether students are in school, face to face, or online during remote learning. And then um, the next sentence ends with if a student is not participating. There's a lot of changes where we um, went to the parent parentheses S parentheses slash legal guardians parentheses S parentheses. So that's throughout the document. Anywhere it related to parent or or anything like that, we added parents' legal guardians. Further down, uh, right above uh, section three, policy development, we added principal or their designee to get away from the his and hers and so forth. And we did that throughout the document. Uh, first line of policy development added the word board in parentheses so we could refer to that rather than dairy cooperative school board in the rest of the document. On um, four, excused and unexcused absence is defined. Um, I believe recognized was used twice. We substituted the word understands in the first part of the sentence. And um, in number six. We substituted the word request. Uh, I think it said written approval. Uh, but this talks about special approval um, once there is a written request. After eleven, the next paragraph um, for the online uh, stuff that we do. The last sentence, it's been added um, failing to log in, late login, or not participating in online remote learning. And then at the bottom of the page, the paragraph that begins with ten half days of unexcused absences. Um, for some reason, uh, they spelled uh, the student in uh, student is a child in need of services in parentheses chins. And in the next sentence, it repeated that. So we took out the child in need of services parentheses and just put the word chins in. And then on the last page, under seven, appeal. Um, schools have uh, student support teams that handle attendance as part of the many uh, myriad of responsibilities that they have. And we added student support team consisting of guidance counselors, social worker, nurse, truancy officer, and school administration. All of the schools have a team and those individuals are involved in it. The teacher was removed because these uh, teams tend to meet um, most of the time uh, when teachers are not available. Um, but by all means, if teachers were available, they could be added as well. The student support team shall consider the following factors in reviewing a request for appeal. And um, the last paragraph there was changed to include an exception of absence that is not otherwise excused as one of the appeals that the student could make. And that would be the revised uh, attendance, tidiness, and truancy policy. Questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions on the board members? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Pinkerton Academy student liaison confirmation.
Okay, I would like to welcome. I'm not sure if Jude is um, revoked tonight, but I'd like to welcome Jude Farley as our Pinkerton Academy liaison. Jude is a junior at Pinkerton Academy and wanted to know whether he should join us tonight. We welcome him as our board liaison from Pinkerton Academy, and I believe Jude will be joining us at our next meeting. So welcome Jude.
Welcome. It's good to have uh, Pinkerton um, student back on the board and giving us some insight into up on the hill.
Absolutely. So looking forward to meeting Jude at the next meeting.
Okay, um, unreserved fund balance.
Hi, um, I, um, but as an attachment, the retention of the unreserved fund balance, it's a presentation that I've done the last two years. I actually just sent it to Cliff, so I'm not sure whether he'll be able to get it up on the screen and I can speak to it. Otherwise, I'll I'll speak to the attachment that was handed out. Uh, to give everybody an idea of what the unreserved fund balance is, it's it's basically unspent funds at the end of your fiscal year. And we are able to retain those funds. Uh, back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, uh, the board approved that we could um, set aside some retained funds, which would be funds that could be used in the future for either a reduction in our tax rate, or if you had um, an expenditure that you needed to have that maybe wasn't uh, budgeted for an emergency expenditure. Those things could be something you had to do with facilities along that lines. So in two thousand seventeen, oh, Dr. Dance is able to get it up. Thank you, Cliff. In two thousand seventeen, the board approved retaining uh, four hundred and thirty thousand. There you go. Perfect. Thank you, Cliff. Uh, the board approved voting, um, retaining four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that amount of money was retained from the year end funds. And we still have those funds that have been set aside. And then last year, at the end of the eighteen nineteen school year, the board again voted to retain some funds. And that was a um, an additional hundred thousand. So to date, we have five hundred and thirty thousand dollars as retained funds, and um, for both of those years, we have not expended any of the monies that we've reset uh, set aside in that um, retained fund balance. We could go to the next one, Cliff? So this is um, these are preliminary numbers. We have not gone through our audit yet, so um, we're just closing out uh, our fiscal year for nineteen twenty. So these are estimated numbers, but our fund balance, when we're posting our fund balance, we would always include our retained funds, which are the five hundred and thirty that I just spoke of, and what we call um, unassigned funds. So those were your unassigned fund balance from the prior year. So um, when you subtract out the retained funds of five hundred and thirty thousand, uh, our net unassigned fund balance, which is typically what you would use for offsetting your um, tax rate as we go into tax rate setting in October. Uh, so that was three million five hundred seventeen thousand seven twenty-four. And when we did our estimation uh, during our budget process last year, we estimated that our unassigned fund balance, um, meaning what we would have at the end of the year unspent, would be approximately three million dollars. So our net surplus from the unassigned fund balance to our projected fund balance is an additional five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. We can go to the next one, Cliff? This is just a little bit harder to see. Um, my font's a little small in there, but to give you an idea of what I did in the columns, again, same formatting that I've used in the last couple of years and and hopefully we can uh, follow along on the first column. You can see the two thousand twenty-one approved budget for um, this coming year. And if you look way down, almost down to the bottom, you can see that the tax rate that we had last year for nineteen twenty was fifteen dollars thirty-six cents. And we have an estimated tax rate of, what we estimated the tax rate for uh, two thousand twenty-one would be was fifteen dollars and ninety cents. So there was a fifty-four cent increase. I'd like to note that I I did speak with the town of Derry and the assessed valuation was slightly different than what we had used for our original estimates, and it likely will change again as we go into tax rate setting. And I don't have that amount yet, and uh, neither did they, but as soon as they have it, we'll certainly um, adjust it to reflect whatever changes are made. So if you look at the second column of funds for two thousand twenty-one. Remember the five hundred and seventeen thousand that I just talked about in the prior slide? So if you were to include that additional revenue of five hundred and seventeen thousand. And you did not keep any of that set aside as a retained fund, or in other words, if you didn't keep any of that five hundred and seventeen thousand and add it to the five hundred and thirty thousand for the retained funds. Then your tax rate impact for two thousand twenty-one would be an estimate of approximately thirty thirty-eight cents over the current tax rate. Okay, so we had estimated fifty-four cents. By returning the additional five hundred and seventeen thousand, our increase over the prior year would be thirty-eight cents. In the next column, if you chose to retain half of that five hundred, that five hundred and seventeen thousand, then and so half of it would go to reduce taxes. The other half would go into that retained fund, and it would add to that five hundred and thirty thousand. So you would add two hundred and fifty-eight thousand to the five thirty. Then your tax rate impact overall from one year to the next would be forty-six cents. And if you retained all of the five hundred and seventeen thousand, and you added it to your five hundred and thirty thousand retained funds, then your tax impact would again go back to being the fifty-four cent um, increase. Now, um, as a reminder, these again are just estimates. Uh, we are just rolling over our fiscal balances from the prior year and have not gone through an audit, which we will start going through on August tenth. And so these are not audit verified numbers, and I do expect them, I do expect them to change as we uh, close out purchase orders that we have right now through the end of the year. So um, hopefully that that makes sense to you. Uh, but I'm open to questions if you have any on on how we uh, came up with our numbers or any of the estimates. I'm happy to take questions on that.
Jane, when um, when do we have to decide what to do with that money?
Um, if you could make a decision would really ultimately be in August at the latest. Because I have to have my uh, my long uh, DOE twenty-five reporting is always due on September first. Now, they may adjust it a little bit due to the type of the year that we're having. They may extend it, but um, the state usually wants that DOE twenty-five on the first so that they can.
Jane, you got muted there.
I'm sorry. I hit it by accident. If you could, if possible, that we could bring it to a vote in um, either the first or second meeting in August. The first meeting would be helpful, um, simply because the audit's going to happen on August tenth. So I guess either way, if it was the first or second meeting in August, then then I'd be okay with that.
Okay, um, one consideration, I believe we meant we talked about this before, was the Medicaid revenue for next year. Do you anticipate the loss of most of that? Is that accurate? How much is that?
Um, yes, thank you for bringing that up, Derek. We had a budgeted, I believe, a hundred and fifty thousand. And to give everybody a reminder, uh, several years ago, we used to receive in some given years, up to five hundred thousand a year in Medicaid reimbursements. This year for uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, we have only budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand. And I would, I would propose either um, reducing that to an anticipated fifty thousand or I would zero out that line item. Last year, we did not receive um, very much money in Medicaid at all. And I know that we're focusing our attention on catastrophic aid because we uh, we feel that we are going to get much more reimbursement on that. So I know we're focusing in our our efforts on that, although we are still billing for Medicaid, and it's always sort of a year behind. So we will want to take that loss of revenue into consideration uh, when we're looking at what we want to set uh, do for unreserved fund balance.
Okay. Thank you, Jane. Um, any questions by the board members this evening for this? Okay, so we'll um, ponder that. We have our first fiscal Okay, so we'll ponder that. We have our first fiscal advisory meeting next week, which we can also discuss there as well, and then we'll try to give Jane a vote. Potentially the first meeting in August. And go from there. Okay, so Jane has the next agenda item as well, the business administrator's update.
Okay, this one I don't have to put up on the screen, but I did include it in your packet. We put in the estimated expenditures, revenues. No big changes there from the, the last time that we gave an update. I also included food service. As you know, we stopped our, our meal program in the middle of July, June. And we are going to be looking at, actually, we are looking at, and we just purchased with the help of Cliff, thank you, and Susan Boroskis. We had to upgrade our software for the food service program to Mosaic, which is a cloud-based program, as opposed to right now, all of our food services on servers. We are also looking at that program because with the new changes and possibility of us serving lunches in classrooms and how does, how is that going to work and look? We're looking at trying to have a online meal ordering system so that parents can go in there and order their student lunches, or or a, a student could even do that from, you know, if a student had the app on their phone, an eighth grader or something like that. So, so we probably won't have that installed until, I would say, at least the second week that we're back. Because they're, they're very backed up as well. So a lot of things that we're trying to get done are just a little bit backed up. And, and we are going to be able to still serve in the classrooms or in a cohort to have them, students eat outside, or if, you know, some were to eat in the cafeteria. I know it would be very small cohorts, but that's what we're working on in food service. So that software is going to be really beneficial to us. And that cost was not reflective in the food service financials that I did attach for you, but we can certainly, does anybody have any questions on the financials that were attached? And if not, then I will just give you some highlights of what, what are going on in our programs? So like I said, we're going to be doing the upgrade with food service. Susan Boroskis and her staff are working for, working on her reentry plan and how we'll be able to feed students, which we plan on doing, and we will make sure we're still meeting our compliance. I know there is a waiver out there, I think it's until June of 2021, to, to be able to serve in classrooms and to change out some of the components that you may have to put into your meal because of some products, not the availability of some of the products. So we're working on that. As far as maintenance and facilities, some of you may have driven by either South Range and Dairy Village. The paving projects have already started. So both projects, we're anticipating being completed within the next two weeks. Dairy Village may go on just a little bit longer due to some drainage that we're working on right now. So if, um, I'm not sure when we're going to start Southwest Running Brook, but that one will be completed as well before school starts. We also had three dormers on the West Running Brook roof that we had had in our maintenance improvement plan, and all three of those dormers have all been replaced, and that job has been completed. The roof project at Gilbert H. Hood, as you know, that was a very large project. I believe it was a $367,000 contract to work on that roof, and that is 80% complete. So they're still over there completing that project. When Marianne talked about our reentry plan, part of those plans are to look at our ventilation system. And we have hired a company to do that, and part of their scope of work is going to be, I'm just going to read it so I make sure I get it right, is to do a performance check to make sure that we're ensuring that we're getting the proper outside intake and checking the inside intake for airflow. And they will be checking to see if there's any issues with the airflow and making sure that everything's okay. And if they come across any issues, they're going to bring it to our attention and, and do repairs to make sure that our ventilation is where we want it, to make sure that we have staff and students in the building in a safe environment. So that's actually taking place. We're still working on our secure lobby renovations. All seven schools are being done at the same time. So we have masons over there. The Gilbert H. Hood offices are all being redone in the front of the building. We're moving them from one section to the other. So all of those are on schedule and will be ready before school starts. So, and that's it. And we also have the audit starting August 10. So we are busy in, in finance. We're in two fiscal years right now. And we are also working on the five-year financial projections so that we can have that ready for next year. So I'm actually in seven different years, I guess. Do you want to look at it that way? Any questions on any of the projects that are going on or finances?
Sounds good, Jane. Lots of moving parts right now around the district. So thank you very much for keeping on top of all that. And still.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Can I just add that my computer was frozen when Marianne was talking about the school reentry plan? And I think it's important for people to know that while it's still a work in progress, we do have things that are being done to plan for students to come back to school, like the ventilation, like adding windows. There's so many pieces that are, that are being put in place to add to the safety of students coming back, which is obviously our number one concern. And I don't want people to think that because none of us had questions or comments, that we don't feel that. We do feel obviously that student security, safety and security and staff is the most important thing. And then, of course, safe is important. So I want to be sure people understand that. While there's a plan that's been being worked on for months, and it gets tweaked every time an expert changes their mind, we are doing things to our buildings and planning with supplies to be sure that when we do welcome students back, we have what we need, and we've done everything we can to be sure that they're safe and their, their, um, their entry back to school is a positive experience for them and their parents and our staff. So I just wanted to thank you for mentioning the ventilation, because I think it's important for people to know that.
Thanks, Brenda. And you're right, we've been, we've actually been working for months, even on the PPA, PPE. The district is fully stocked with PPE for staff, students. The custodians will have training from our custodial vendor that we get all our supplies from. They'll be doing the training to make sure that they have all the protocols and good cleaning protocols from the CDC. And Cleanorama will be doing that for our staff. We have all our cleaning supplies, disinfectants. We have additional electrostatic sprayers that we'll be using for disinfection. We just got those in. Those have been on order since March. So the district is prepared with all cleaning supplies and safety materials that we need to do as a reentry to make sure that our students and staff have a safe environment to come into. So thanks for bringing that up, Brenda.
Okay, thank you very much. And moving to committee reports, manifest approval.
Yeah, I can make that motion, Derek.
Thank you, sir.
Jessica's had it the last couple of meetings. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve manifesting the amount of $7,86,219.26, of which general payroll is $3,628,335.93. And general expenses are $557,883.35. So that completes that motion. Needs a second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion? None? Okay, Lynn.
Oh, but of course.
Jessica.
Yes.
Brenda.
Sorry, hit the wrong button. Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes. And any other committee reports?
Oh, yeah, I'll just bring up, I think you've already emailed, it was in our packet, but it's a reminder that we have our legislative meeting with our liaison committee and the town council. We have 28 invitations out to people running for office to represent Derry. Senator Birdso will be attending as well, so that people who wish to represent our community understand some of the challenges that may have developed financially for all of us. And as they go forward and head to Concord, maybe in November, we want to make sure they have the right message and that it's a, it's a good meeting, good opportunity for both governments to work collaboratively. So we've got that. And I just want to also add about the buildings and grounds and the activities regarding the paving projects on the district. You know, Jane, Jeremy put a lot of people in place. Had, we had a very good turnout of support from town hall staff, our highway department, our water department managers and the administrative team in the town hall. All worked great. They helped us resolve really, I don't want to say dodged a bullet, but that's what we did. And relative to saving some money on water repairs. You know, antiquated water lines going to Dairy Village was going to be a pricely, pricey item. And the work, you know, Brenda, myself there, Nick couldn't make it, but kept him informed. And, and it just had a good outcome in the day. And, and we have some good improvements, and I like the collaboration that, that the SAU has got going with the, with municipality. So that's about it for, for me.
Thank you, Lynn. And as I mentioned earlier, the fiscal advisory committee will be meeting its first meeting of the year next Thursday evening at Hood, I believe. So we thought we'd get the ball rolling a little early this year just because of the circumstances and get them on board, get some feedback and direction for the district for the fall budget season. And moving forward, or, or along with the legislative meeting, it's, they're in-person meetings with a, with a, a remote option for people that wish to participate remotely. And at this point, we're planning on our next school board meeting being a live meeting with, with an option as well for remote. And if there are no other committee reports, we'll move on to delegations and individuals, if we have anyone with us.
Hey, Derek.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. It's Meg Moesberry. How are you guys tonight?
Thank you.
Um, so this afternoon, after listening to the governor, governor's press conference, I can tell you, I was left a little bit disappointed that it was not more clear guidelines on the health and safety to protect all of our education community in New Hampshire. It was clear that, and felt like the teachers would be, the health and safety for teachers were being dismissed and diminished. And there's now more uncertainty than there was before. The governor went on to praise New Hampshire residents for what he said we were doing by wearing masks and saying six feet apart and washing our hands. He also made the statement that the mission is not accomplished. That's all true, except the exception of schools. Three to six feet is good enough. Masks are not mandated, but still a good idea. There's no sense here when local restaurants can only have 50% of their, of their tables occupied and inside dining. You're more than six with table. You can only stay for an hour and 15 minutes. There's only 180 people allowed at Chars one time. Gyms are limited, and every other public gathering face has a limited capacity. This decision puts back onto local districts a decision that should have been clearer from the, the start task force and the governor. He did not consider any of the issues that we are facing. Brenda just brought up the point of, and Jane about ventilation, looking at an HVAC situation. That was brought up today in the conference with the governor. People asked him about funds. It was kind of dismissed. Schools can do all the miraculous things that schools do, but we might have a resurgence, and the, and the state needs to offer more support. He wants us to be flexible. Well, flexibility, this is a reckless and dangerous gamble that could most likely be paid off in life.
Thank you, Meg. I think it's important that, that everyone, everyone be heard. And certainly voicing concerns is always warranted, and, and this is a good time to do so. And we appreciate your always effort to come on and speak with us in, in doing that. So thank you very much.
And one other thing I'd like to ask, Derek, is that I know we've been putting out more surveys to parents about what their plans are for the fall. I know we're considering doing another teacher survey. I know parents are probably going to have questions after tonight. I, I know Marianne's got some town hall meeting kind of formats. I would like to see those go in either this format so that parents can call in and ask questions. And I think the 28th meeting, if it's possible, I think the 28th meeting should be a meeting that's at one of the schools. I think, are, are you guys ready to go in person? Can you have an in-person meeting at one of the schools? Because I think at this point, people need to be able to come and ask questions and make comments.
Yeah, I think we're planning that that meeting would be, I guess a hybrid is a term. So that, as I mentioned earlier in the evening, that, that we plan on that meeting to be a, a live meeting, but people can participate remotely, so.
That's good. Thanks, Derek. I appreciate it. And everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Any other folks on board? Okay. Any other business? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Derek. Okay. All right, folks, we will see you on the 28th. Stay safe between now and then.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Stay safe. Bye, guys.
Bye.